And welcome to the school committee meeting of June 21st, 2022. It looks like we're beginning at 7:03. With that, obviously, we want to welcome our guests to us this evening. Thank you. Is there anyone that's not associated with a group that was preparing to speak tonight? I think everyone is with the group, yes. Excellent. We'll get to hear from you guys in a little bit. It's with a heavy heart, obviously, that we come to our meeting this evening. On behalf of the Pembroke School Committee, our thoughts and prayers are with the McManus family during this tragic loss. Our entire Pembroke School family is grieving for you. The crisis team of faculty, staff, and administration continues to execute a support plan for all the students and families impacted. We can't say enough how amazing our staff has been. It's important in moments like these, in moments like these, it defines who we are as a school community, and Pembroke is truly special. As the school comes to an end tomorrow, drop and counseling sessions will be available for our students over the coming weeks. In addition, there are several students that we have set to give them special times if they can come this summer. We will constantly be reevaluating and adjusting when and wherever needed. This painfully highlights the struggles our childrens are having and demonstrates why we will continue to focus and support the social and emotional well-being of our students. So at this time, we would like to observe a moment of silence for the McManus family. With that, we will try to do a little bit of business tonight. So communicate, any adjustments to the agenda? There is none. Communications?
Communications, there's just one email in the school committee mailbox. It is from Mrs. Jassy, and she just was hoping that you all in the future would be mindful of when we're scheduling your meetings so that they don't conflict with other events in the district. As you know, June is a very difficult month. Tonight is promotion night. It already happened here at North at 5:30. Both Habimack and Bryantville were at 6:30. We do understand and appreciate that. If we were to not schedule meetings on nights as other things, we wouldn't meet in June at all, because there has been something every Tuesday. But we are mindful of that, and we do ask generally that other school events don't happen on the first and third Tuesdays on the calendar. Unfortunately, with snow days and the way this year ends up, this is the third Tuesday. The other piece of that communication is just a request that after tonight's presentation for families that weren't able to come and participate, that there be other discussion if they have questions or want to get some more information.
Thank you. And that is a great reminder that if you have any questions, they can be emailed to scinfo@pembroke12k12.org anytime throughout the meeting, and we'll be checking that. And then you can also watch us on Pembroke Titan TV, and again, we thank them for being a part of us. The approval of the bill's schedule has happened, and now consideration approval for the school committee minutes of June 7th, 2020, 2022.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Sue, second by David. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Ayes have it. Thank you. Would you like to introduce our guest?
Sure. Just going to make sure, Natalie, we should make sure that the computer is working for them. I think it timed out. So tonight, we have a parent group, Moms Demand Action. So Sue Renee and Vicky Penese have chatted with both Mary Beth and I a couple times over the past few years around the Safe Gun Storage Program that is promoted by Moms Demand Action. They're going to share a little bit of that information with you all tonight. Prior to that, they have met with our mental health staff on one of our half-day professional development, half-day professional development opportunities earlier in the spring and went through it with them. And I do think, you know, this is definitely an important topic. It has obviously come to the forefront a little bit in the past few weeks with all that's been going on in the country, but it's definitely a conversation that we've been having prior to that. So the events in Texas are not the catalyst for this conversation tonight, but do, I think, exemplify why these conversations are so important. So I'm going to hand it over to Vicky and Sue.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Can people hear me through the microphone?
Yes, so the microphone is so that they can hear you at home. It doesn't amplify in the room.
Thank you to the Pembroke School Committee Superintendent Erin Obi, school administrators, and others who are here this evening to consider a simple proposal that we know will help reduce preventable gun violence in schools and in our local communities. In light of the recent events, I want to let you know that we are going to talk about sensitive issues. I'm Sue Renee, and my colleague Vicky Penese is here, and we also have Julie Benoit. She's here from Moms Demand and the State Public Education Team. We are volunteers with Moms Demand Action and the Be Smart program of Every Town for Gun Safety, a grassroots organization that works to prevent gun violence in communities across the country. Every Town for Gun Safety is a nonpartisan organization, and we are supportive of responsible gun owners keeping firearms out of the hands of dangerous or unauthorized people and focused on public safety.
Hi, I'm Vicky Penese. I'm from Pembroke and raised my family here. Just a little bio of us. I've been an active participant in Pembroke Public Schools and the community in large. I became part of Moms Demand Action after Parkland, and I really liked their approach to proactive gun solutions, and I'm looking forward to working with Pembroke Public Schools to make our community better.
Again, my name is Sue Renee, and just like Vicky, I grew up in Pembroke, and I went to this elementary school as my two sons, who are now adults. I was an active PTO member and on the PTO board for 13 years. I joined Moms Demand back in 2018 after Parkland, and I donate money to Sandy Hook Promise and March For Our Lives. I know if we can work together, we can drastically reduce gun violence. Our sincere wish is to raise awareness and action in local communities for evidence-based strategies that work, and specifically tonight, for measures on behalf of schoolchildren and teen safety. What we'll present is an important but often overlooked piece of the puzzle for helping reduce gun violence. We will present for 25 minutes, followed by a question and answer period, and we will also provide you with supplemental handouts and a cookie. We all have been horrified too many times by school shootings and threats. It happened yet again at Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas in May, and at Oxford High School in Michigan in 2021. In December, schools endured TikTok threats of school gun violence. Other threats late last year surfaced in schools in Whitman Hansen, Revere, Walheim, and Lawrence. Recently, students in Charlestown and Everett were arrested for bringing firearms to schools. Massachusetts is not immune to gun violence. In the face of threats, schools did the right thing by carefully monitoring them, keeping parents informed of their credibility, and heightening security where necessary. However, what is often omitted in school communications to parents is a proactive message, the critical necessity of families to securely store any firearms they may own. We urge you today to add one more component to your school safety strategies, namely incorporating proactive messaging about secure firearm storage to protect students from potential tragedies. In Massachusetts, we have worked with the Plymouth and Newburyport School Districts to pass secure storage notification resolutions, which sets the framework for this safety Our presentation will cover these topics: what is gun violence, firearm sales in 2020 and unprecedented surge, statistics and trends that can impact schools, why schools should get involved in raising awareness, the Keeping School Safe report and the Be Smart program, adopting secure firearm storage notification policy, and available resources and examples.
First, what do we understand by the term gun violence? Firearms-related deaths are most devastating form of gun violence. Currently, we are averaging 115 firearm-related deaths per day in this country, more than the fatality numbers from prescription opioid crisis. Firearms-related injuries are the second form of gun violence, and they often carry devastating consequences and high societal costs. For every firearm-related death, there are two to three times the number of injuries. Less visible, but traumatic nevertheless, are firearm threats, as in domestic violence incidents or school threats. Lastly, the act of witnessing gun violence is gun violence. All of these situations leave a lasting impact on individuals. In 2020, there was an unprecedented surge in firearm sales, both nationally and in our state, and this trend continued into 2021. Americans legally purchased almost 23 million firearms in 2020, a 64% increase over the year before and the highest on record. In 2021, with close to 20 million legal purchases, the trend continued. These statistics capture sales made with background checks. They don't indicate additional sales made without background checks estimated in the millions as well. In 2020, 8.5 million people in America purchased their first firearm. In Massachusetts, over 262,000 background checks were processed, a 24% increase over the year before. What we are highlighting with this information is simply that increased firearm sales can create greater risks, such as when firearms are not securely stored. We know that while millions of responsible gun owners store their firearms securely, more than half of gun owners do not store all of their guns securely.
I know that guns are an emotional issue, and we all may come from different backgrounds. Many of us are parents, caregivers, or grandparents. Some of us are gun owners, and some are not. Some of us may even be gun violence survivors. Whatever our backgrounds, we surely can agree on three things. One, we want kids to grow up happy and healthy. Two, we have the right to make responsible decisions about how we protect our homes, families, and communities, including whether or not to have a gun in our home. If we can prevent, three, if we can prevent even one child gun death or injury, it's our responsibility to do so.
Now I'd like to present some disturbing facts about gun violence in minors. According to the just-released CDC data, in the U.S., firearms are now the leading cause of death for all minors, as well as for all children and teens aged 1 through 19. More than 1,800 minors are killed with guns every year, an average of five children a day. If we include statistics for the 18- and 19-year-olds, that number doubles. 6,000 more minors are injured every year, often causing devastation to their lives and huge cost to society. Every year, 3 million children witness gun violence. We know that children exposed to violence, crime, and abuse are more likely to abuse drugs and alcohol, suffer from depression, anxiety, and PTSD, fail or have difficulties in school, and potentially engage in criminal activity. We should not underestimate this impact on their lives and our communities. We know that in the U.S., the number of minors who live in homes with at least one loaded, unlocked firearm is 4.6 million. School shootings are on everyone's mind nowadays. Did you know that 78% of school shooters under the age of 18 obtain their guns from their home or the homes of relatives or friends where they were unsecured? In articles by Newsweek and USA Today a few months ago, the first half of the 2021-2022 school year was on track to set a record to be the most violent in recent years. In Massachusetts, looking back to 2013, thankfully, there have been no shootings in K-12 schools. However, Robb Elementary, Oxford High School, and Parkland were unthinkable before the tragedies happened there. Over 80% of minors who die by gun suicide use a gun accessible to them from their own home or that of a family member. The 2017 CDC National Youth Survey showed that 17% of high school students surveyed had seriously considered attempting suicide within the last year. Another study around that time showed that 41% of adolescents in gun-owning households report having easy access to guns in their home. This situation provides a recipe for potential tragedy. Even in Massachusetts, we are not immune to suicide ideations in teens. The percentages of Massachusetts high school students seriously considering suicide or actually attempting it have risen in recent years. I have a personal connection with this. In September 2020, my daughter, who struggles with depression, attempted suicide. Although we do have guns in our home, they are securely locked up, and only two family members have access to them. Had gun security and safety in our home not already been a priority for us, this attempt could have been fatal. Instead, our family was able to get the opportunity to get my daughter the help she needed. For this, I am forever grateful.
The suicide rate among young people is at a record high, with alarming increases every year since 2007. The suicide rate for children ages 10 through 14 has nearly tripled. 10- to 24-year-olds have the fastest-growing firearm suicide rates of any age group over the past decade. This trend has been intensified by the pandemic. Fear of the illness itself and social isolation causing an increase in anxiety and loneliness. Firearms suicide makes up nearly half of the suicides among young people. There are multiple factors that can elevate the risk of suicide, including current life stressors and historical risk factors, and of course, action must be taken to address these root causes. But one thing is clear: lethal means of harm is a third risk, and by reducing unsupervised, unauthorized access by youth to firearms can significantly reduce risk. Unintentional shootings by minors are another area of concern. Nationwide, in 2021, there were at least 392 unintentional shootings by children, leading to a 39% increase in unintentional shooting deaths of children compared to 2019. No story of these tragic losses is quite the same, but all stories are devastating and all are preventable. These are not accidents. Most unintentional gun deaths among children occur in or around the home, involve guns that are loaded and accessible, occur when the children or teens play with or handle the gun. Fortunately, such cases do not happen often in our state. However, there have been a few reported in recent years. With the recent surge in firearm sales, we must raise awareness of such tragedies even more than ever. In Massachusetts, we sometimes see news stories like these, all took place because of a common denominator: unsecured guns. The children involved ranged from 3 to 17, and I'll just mention a few. In Abington, an 11-year-old boy found a handgun in his friend's home, discharged it while playing, hitting his friend in the head, causing serious injury. In Holyoke, a 5-year-old boy brought a loaded gun to school that he had found at his grandfather's house. Thankfully, it was removed at the school before any tragedy occurred. In Yarmouth Port, a 3-year-old girl found a handgun on a bedside table and discharged it, hitting her hand. When firearms are not securely stored in homes and vehicles of family relatives and friends, the risk of tragedies occurring due to unsupervised youth gaining access to unsecured firearms increases youth suicides, unintentional shootings, school shootings, and potentially some homicides.
Gun violence is a complex issue with many causes. There is no one solution to reducing gun violence, but there are many evidence-based solutions. Raising public awareness about the importance of secure firearm storage is one of these solutions. Secure storage practices are promoted by the American Academy of Pediatrics, the National Shooting Sports Foundation, National PTA, and many other organizations, and they are codified in our mass state laws.
Reducing gun violence begins in the home and in the local community. Everyone has a role to play, as seen here at the top of this slide, and this includes schools. Why should schools be involved in raising awareness? Schools are in a unique position to raise awareness through their broad outreach. They are in touch with students' behaviors and mental health. They have a responsibility to implement ways to reduce risk of school shootings. Schools have a vested interest in preventing gun violence, as stress related to gun violence affects students' performance and well-being.
There is a relevant report entitled "Keeping Our Schools Safe: A Plan to Stop Mass Shootings and End Gun Violence in American Schools." Every Town for Gun Safety and the NEA and AFT, the nation's two largest teachers' unions, collaborated on the report. Every school district knows that we need meaningful action to keep our schools safe, the kind of action that is based on facts about gun violence in schools and includes preventing it from occurring in the first place. The report is evidence-based and presents eight proactive solutions proven most effective. One of these eight solutions is to encourage secure firearm storage practices in the school community. Massachusetts has enacted strict state storage laws, including paragraphs about child access prevention, which is useful. But it is equally important to raise public awareness about these laws and the public's legal responsibility to follow them. The report mentions the Be Smart program, which we will touch on now. The statistics and stories are frightening, but in all of these cases, there are things we can do. Be Smart is an educational program of Every Town for Gun Safety endorsed by the National PTA. It highlights the importance of gun ownership that is responsible, and its goal is to reduce child gun deaths through adult education. The program promotes five easy-to-remember behaviors for adults to help reduce tragedies which occur when unsupervised, unauthorized children and teens gain access to unsecured firearms. It involves gun owners and non-gun owners. SMART is an acronym, S for Secure Guns in Homes and Vehicles, M for Model Responsible Behavior Around Guns, A for Ask About Whether Guns Are Secured in Others' Homes, which is important for non-gun owners also, R to Recognize the Role of Firearms in Suicides, and T to Tell Your Peers to Be Smart. The bottom line is that the responsibility for keeping kids safe lies with adults, not with the children. Be Smart has presented over 6,000 events nationwide since 2015 in all 50 states, and we would welcome the opportunity to present it in the Pembroke School District.
In December 2021 press release, Every Town for Gun Safety stated that currently over 2 million K-12 students nationwide now attend schools with firearm storage awareness policies in place. These policies demonstrate school districts' commitment to raising awareness about the lifesaving effects of secure storage practices and current safe storage laws where they exist. This movement began in 2019, and many schools in the state shown on this slide have either passed secure storage notification resolutions and/or partnered with the Be Smart program, and the list is growing. Secure storage notification resolutions provide a framework for implementation. They're proactive, evidence-based, entail no cost, promote a simple but wide-reaching message, empower the public, and don't create any new work for teachers. Massachusetts schools have already undertaken many measures to increase student safety. They inform their communities about threats and/or relevant gun violence-related issues and put additional security in place if warranted. Some schools have implemented threat assessment programs, hot and physical infrastructure, adopted the Sandy Hook Promise Know the Sign program, chosen to use Alice training, et cetera. However, something simple is missing. Schools should also proactively raise awareness. Schools care about and have a vested interest in all aspects of student safety. Raising awareness about the lifesaving effects of secure firearm storage should be included in the safety messaging, just like messaging on substance abuse, internet safety, fire safety, and more. We provide model resolution language for Massachusetts, which school committees use as a basis for developing their own resolutions. Schools can choose to adopt the language as shown or modify it. Resolve that the board directs the superintendent and staff to inform parents, guardians, and the school community of the importance and lifesaving effects of secure firearm storage and their legal obligations per current Massachusetts Safe Storage Law to protect minors from accessing unsecured firearms. Resolve that the board and the superintendent will continue to work with local law enforcement, health agencies, and nonprofits to collaborate and increase efforts to inform district parents of their obligations regarding secure storage firearms in their homes.
We ask that Pembroke Public Schools join the national conversation and commit to a path that will have future longevity by adopting a secure storage notification resolution that would also include the Be Smart programming for adults. It would resolve to notify the school community about the lifesaving effects of secure firearm storage, current Massachusetts Safe Storage Laws, and their responsibility to follow them. Also, adopt a broader approach. Commit the school committee and superintendent to continuing to work with local law enforcement, health agencies, and nonprofits. to continuing to work with local law enforcement, health agencies, and nonprofits to increase efforts to inform district parents and the school community.
After adopting a resolution, notifying the school community should take place as soon as possible and on a regular basis, at least annually. The purpose of this notification is proactive, and every day that goes by before awareness is raised widely presents a risk of tragedy. There are many examples of how school districts notify their school communities. Some are used in combination: direct communication to parents and caregivers by letter or email. This may require a signature just to acknowledge their awareness; a student handbook update, superintendent's newsletter, a school website and social media outreach, and a press release. Besides the notification methods just mentioned, the broader approach involving collaboration with law enforcement, health agencies, and nonprofit organizations opens up opportunities for ongoing programming. It could mean educational programming for parents and staff, such as the Be Smart program by Every Town for Gun Safety volunteers, education on suicide awareness and prevention by suicide prevention coalitions, review of Massachusetts Secure Storage Laws by law enforcement, educational programming for students. Consider implementing the Sandy Hook Promise Know the Signs program; there is a cost. School safety focus by holding a school safety fair, a school safety symposium discussing various safety topics. School safety newsletter focusing on all safety topics. Send Be Smart materials home to families; publicize Be Smart link on the school website. School health forms: if you have a firearm in your home, how are they stored or are they securely stored? The Plymouth School District is the first one in our state to promote secure firearm storage as part of their overall focus on student safety by passing the resolution in May 2021. This resolution is an important service to the Plymouth School Community. As part of the implementation of the resolution during the 2021-22 school year, Plymouth has emailed parents and the school community to notify them of the critical and lifesaving effects of secure firearm storage, posted the parent email on their website, including a link to the resolution and to the Be Smart program, invited us to participate at their School District Health and Safety Fair with several other organizations focused on family, child, and youth safety, had us present the Be Smart program to their staff on Teacher Development Day and also their wellness community, which meets regularly throughout the year and consists of over 100 adults from the community. Schools across the country have used many different ideas to implement their resolutions, and we can do this too in Pembroke.
This is how the Plymouth School District's parent email looks. The messaging includes links to many resources, including the Be Smart website, the Plymouth Police Department's website, the Attorney General's Office, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and Every Town for Gun Safety. We offer many resources: a model resolution, sample resolutions, a model parent notification letter, sample newsletter messaging from other school districts, updated gun violence data resulting from unsecured firearm storage, and more. We also have several digital handouts to supplement for this presentation.
In closing, I'd like to highlight that the American Academy for Pediatrics has concluded that the absence of guns in homes is the most effective deterrent to prevent suicide, homicide, and other firearm-related incidents in children and teens. But if there are guns in the home, AAP states that storing guns unloaded and locked with ammunition kept in a separate place can best mitigate the risk of child firearm injury. We as individuals and as schools can prevent the tragedies which occur when unsupervised unauthorized children and, I'm sorry, when unsupervised unauthorized children and teens gain access to unsecured firearms. Schools should add their important voice to the other community advocates by actively educating parents and caregivers about how secure firearm storage can save lives. As a wise woman recently said to us, "In simple terms, secure gun storage leads to safer schools."
Thank you very much for your attention today. We hope that we can be a resource for Pembroke Public Schools as you take the very important step of normalizing the conversation around secure gun storage and making a positive impact on our community. At this time, I would like to ask Julie to come join us as we enter into the question and answer part of our presentation. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Perfect. You took my line. So Sue, Vicki, thank you for your presentation. Julie, welcome. Committee, questions for the group? Dave?
Well, I'd like to say first of all...
No, Sue.
I was gonna say, first of all, I really appreciate your advocacy and your passion for the subject. I think it's very timely. You know, it's very timely and, you know, happy to hear that this program exists. I think that obviously gun safety is very important, and this is a really nice, nonpartisan way to really make people aware of what steps, like, simple steps they can take, and they don't feel like their rights are being taken away. So I appreciate you coming and speaking to us.
Any questions?
No questions.
Any thoughts, Dave?
Ladies, thank you. Amazing presentation. I have a ton of questions. I saw the statistics. I'd almost like a chance to decipher this and kind of come back and talk to it on another day. But the only concern I have, and I'm playing devil's advocate, please don't take this my stance, I get nervous when we start going into people's homes. You know, and to me, you can't legislate decency. Now, you can legislate awareness, I get that. But I think when we start to cross the line, going into people's houses and tell them, you know, lock up your guns, you know, lock your car keys away, lock up your liquor, you know what I mean? I just wonder if the public comes back to us and says, "Stay out of my home. Stay out of my business," and that's my concern. And again, I'm not disagreeing with anything you've said. I'm just wondering what the other side of the spectrum might be. So again, I'd like a little chance to, you know, kind of look at this.
Exactly, yeah. To be honest, we had the same thought too, but I think it is just education and information. So it's just, and building community and being able to maybe talk about it. I'll be honest, 20 years ago, I went over to a friend's house, my kids were little, and my girlfriend got a phone call, and it was a parent asking if her other child could go over. And she said right on the phone, this is 20 years ago, "Do you have firearms in your home? Are they locked?" And I looked at her like, "What?" And she was like, "I ask that all the time." I said, "Why didn't you ever ask me?" And she goes, "I know you don't have firearms." And I was like, "Oh, okay." And I thought about it afterwards. I was like, wow, she made it sound so normal. She just, and her friend, her kid went over, you know, it was like, just like you say, you know, "My son is allergic to dogs. Do you have a dog?" You know? "Why don't your kid come over here because you have a dog," right? So you just have that conversation, and it was just a, made it normal. You know, it was just communication.
And David too, just to remind, tonight's really an information session. We appreciate the information that we're getting.
Yeah.
And then as a committee, if we choose to move forward, it's something we'll move to policy and have something potentially put together that way.
Now I'm confused, because we got a resolution in our package. Is that resolution not up for consideration?
You got a sample from the...
This was a sample.
It was a sample, right? I thought it was a...
No, I just gave you a sample.
Okay, that's not the way it was communicated to me.
Which is why I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I'm glad, thank you, because I thought, so let me start off with, what was said to us, the resolution, right in the past couple days? In favor of it, I think it's a good idea. I've been around guns since I was very young. I was taught gun safety before I ever put a firearm on my hand. So I get it. I wholeheartedly agree with what you're trying to do. With David, I would say, the way the education is, people can choose to listen or they can choose not to. The couple things that stood out to me, because what I heard at the very beginning was awareness and action. Awareness is pretty simple, and that's pretty straightforward, right straight ahead. Got it, no issue. The action part I was kind of struggling with was where was it and where would we fit into that? Saw some of the things towards the end, the two, and I pulled out. Thank you, Vicki, when you handed this out, the two pieces from Plymouth. I get that potentially with the action, because I heard a couple things. I heard about 8 million new gun, I'm sorry, 8 million new background checks last year, if I get the timing right.
New gun owners.
Sorry. 8 million new gun owners was one number. I got 40, sorry, half the guns are not secured safely, and 4.6 million minors are in a home with an unsecured gun. And 78% of school shooters under the age of 18 got their firearm through, right? Yeah, antecdotally, completely would have been right on there, just wouldn't have known the percentages. My question that I'm asking myself is, how do you move the dial? An email, something on a website, I hate to say, it's not going to move the dial, because you're not going to get to the people who you're trying to get to in the half, the 4.6 million. That's who you're not going to get to. So how do you get to some of them? You're not going to get all of them, you know, just around. So that to me, if, and again, I thought when we got a sample resolution, that was for consideration. If we do go the resolution route, which I think we should, it has to come with some type of action. You see Rick and Wendy here, it has to come in with action, working with them. You know, you can offer the courses. You know, it's up to people to attend, right? You can put them on YouTube, you can put them, whatever. We haven't used to put it, because you're not saying, "Oh, we're gonna take away your guns." We're trying to say, "We want you to sort them safely." I think we get that. The question for the, thing to me that I want to see is something that would drive action. The communication and awareness, to me, and please take this the right way, that's like thoughts and prayers to me. I hate, right, because everyone, I've been doing this a long time. I've been doing this since before Columbine, right? And every time it's happened, oh, you know, it can never happen again, or it's not going to happen again, we need to stop it. Columbine, those kids are now adults, if I remember them correctly. There's some of those kids in their 30s. You know, so we need a different game plan.
Well, can I just say first of all, this isn't going to solve the problem.
I completely agree.
Obviously. But the reason why it's great in a school system like this is we reach 1,700 community members through outreach through the school. And yeah, it's not gonna necessarily, just like when we hold a nighttime event on drug awareness, the parents that show up are the parents that don't need the drug awareness. The parents who want to show up are not the ones that show up. But that doesn't mean you don't hold it, it doesn't mean you don't offer it, it doesn't mean you don't put it out there. So I would say, like, in our vision, in like, the perfect world for us, for this program for Pembroke, you would put the language in the handbook, you would put out it, you would add it into the paperwork parents do in the beginning of the year that just, you know, notifies them, "Do you have guns in your home? Are they secured safely? Here's the link to Massachusetts State Laws." You know, you're spreading that message. They sign the bottom of the paper like they do for internet safety. Then I'd love to see bringing us back or other programs back to talk to teachers, talk to parents, go to PTO meetings, offer the Be Smart program to adults. Then also, if we could in town throw a safety fair like Plymouth did, they just worked it. It was phenomenal. It was huge. It was well-attended. Lots of people having conversations. It was a wonderful thing, and we haven't had something like that in our community in a long time. And another thing Sue and I had attended at Plymouth, they had a presentation night of the Be Smart program. And they also had the local police come and address the audience at the end, talk, like, really explaining mass laws, being there is the authority. And I do think we have the support of Pembroke Public Schools, that they're willing to work with us to do whatever information we want to get out for Pembroke and to the parents. So we're never going to solve all the things, but this is one little thing that we can take a step and do. And I think it would be really valuable to our community to get it out there. We have to start with something. And, you know, we don't, this doesn't cost a lot of money. This doesn't, it's just awareness, it's normalizing the conversation, letting people feel comfortable to say to their neighbors, "Ooh, my kid's over there. Do you have guns? Are they locked up? Okay, great," because God forbid there was a tragedy, and you was like, "Oh, my God, I wish I'd asked." It's too late then, so...
Yeah, I hope you didn't take that as saying to do nothing.
No, no, not at all.
Because that was absolutely, that was definitely the other end. It was trying to, if we're going to do something, you know, the resolution is nice and you feel good that night, but it has to have something followed up, something that you can measure, right? And I'm saying I don't know what that is right now.
Yeah, I don't know. That might be something that Pembroke grows, right? And we could be the leaders in that and find out what it is, so...
And we did just give a ton of information. We understand that, like, and it does take time to absorb, and we are here to ask more questions. Like, you could call us in a week, a month, whatever, and we will definitely, we have resources through Julie. She's been doing this for a long time. We have other schools now that are going through this too. We couldn't say them, but there's a lot of activity. Moms Demand just got, how many states? 11,000 new members? Oh, so if you want to do become a member, you text 64433, and you text the word "ACT," and you can be in the loop on what's going on. And Massachusetts is very good with gun safety laws, and we're very fortunate for that. But there's still, like, we have the statistics here. There's more guns, and if there's more guns and more unsecured guns, statistically, we're heading, you know, so we have to do something. You know, we have to...
Make a step.
Make a step somewhere.
And I'll always add, one of the things that we have discovered through the Be Smart program, when we give presentations, when we do tabling events, we've done tabling events at local churches, we've done them in schools, like we've mentioned at the school safety fair, those one-on-one conversations that we have with people that come up to the table, the number of parents that I've spoken to that have said like, "Oh, I never thought about asking. Thanks." And that's just one more person that's aware about what it means to have, you know, sending your child to a place that has a secured firearm. And I, we often try to give out cable locks free to anybody that needs them. And so again, "Do you mind if I take one of those locks? I know somebody that has an unsecured gun." That's awesome. They take that, like, even if they don't right away run over and say, "I hear you. I know that you have an unsecured gun, and this is what, you know, this is what you need." It's a step in the right direction to making sure that that firearm gets securely stored so that a child does not get... So I understand your concern about making sure that we have actions connected to the resolution. And so that's why we wanted to make sure that we gave you a whole bunch of different ways that we can take action.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, guys. A couple quick thoughts. I think the concept, right, gun safety and making sure that they're secure guns, that's the no-brainer on our end, right? So we know that we have the vehicle to share information, right? Awareness is a simple process for us. We've talked about that. Being able to share information on this topic, that's a simple thing. So as we start to look at, just curious, what is Plymouth's resolution? I didn't see it up there. Is it similar to Newburyport's?
It's actually on their website.
It's on their website, okay.
If you want to take a look at it, yep. If you look for the link on their website, I think it's, I think the link says "Keep Our Kids Safe." And then in there, you will find the resolution and the email that was sent home to all the families.
Perfect. I think, correct me if I'm misunderstanding, when you talk about the form to go home about, "Do you have a secure, or do you have a gun? Is it secure?" Were you asking us to collect that information? Was that something that gets...
Rhetorical.
Okay, perfect, because you talked about they sign and...
You recognize that you've read that and you're moving on. You're not asking.
Gotcha, because...
It continues to just normalize the conversation about securing your firearms.
Perfect. I appreciate that clarity. Thank you. I will open up discussion from the committee. First, I will stop and thank you, guys. I'm still getting, I'm still getting the hang of this, so thank you. We appreciate your time this evening. Thanks to all of you, and for those that came out to support them. Thank you. With that, I will now open back up discussion with the committee about the topics that we just heard.
Again, tough one. I wonder, it's like you agree with it 100%, but I just get nervous of kind of going into people's homes and asking them like on a form when you're filling out about, you know, "Do your kids get free lunch or school lunch? Oh, by the way, is there a gun in your house?" You know what I mean? Again, what's the next question that gets out? I'm not saying I won't do it. I'm just, in my mind, I'm kind of saying, you know, again, I just, I think this is amazing in one sense, and I think what I've always tried to say to people is, we're here to educate. And whether you believe in an issue or don't believe in an issue, we're supposed to be Switzerland. You know what I mean? We basically said, "Okay, here is the subject matter. We brought in experts, be it teachers, be it administrators, whatever, to talk about this topic and not have a bias." You know, I think if we had a member of the NRA standing up here, we might get a different opinion, you know, that type of a thing. Not to say, again, they're right or they're wrong either. So again, and my thing, I'd love to take a look at this. I'd like to get on the Plymouth website, see what their thing says. I, like Mike, thought that was our resolution when I saw the new report thing, and I said, "Okay, that's a little tough to jump onto right now."
I was gonna say, it is a law that we're trying to use in state laws. So we're not giving opinions on gun safety. It's important, this is the law. We're very fortunate. So you don't have to worry about that, because you're stating a law. You're not giving an opinion. You're not saying, "Remember, the reason you have safety, and everybody else does," but it is just the law, so...
it is just a law, so.
Yeah. Again, I will say respectfully, I'm, I'm watching graduation season and all the people that know that 21 is the drinking age, and if I hear one more party, the parents say, as long as everybody stays overnight here, we're okay with you having a drink, I have a problem with that.
People will have, that's what I'm saying, like, you're not passing your own opinion by sharing that, you know.
That's all I'm saying, that's all. I 100% understand that you're saying, people might have issue with that, like, like you're saying about drinking or whatever, but when you were explaining you have concerns for the school giving that, I'm just saying, you're not giving an opinion, you're just passing forward the law, that's all.
Right, but I said, we start passing forward every law that's out there. You know what I mean? Again, it's just, I think it, I want to look at, I think it's a slippery slope, I'm not saying it's a bad one by any stretch of the imagination, and I'm playing a little bit of devil's advocate, because, you know, this is a conversation that'll come up in the coffee shop tomorrow when I walk in, and no matter where I go, people are going to say to me, you're 100% behind you, 100% opposed to you, and a few in the middle, and, you know, so that, that's, again, not trying to belabor the point, but I just want to take a look at this. Thank you.
I mean, as we're looking to move forward, I would just like us to see about what we could do for educational opportunities. And when we talk about that, right, we've spent a lot of time at this table over the past four to five years, talking about social emotional well-being of our children. To me, this ties into that, we heard, we saw some of the statistics. So David, I understand, right, there's certain things, I, I pause too when I, on the, on like the power, whatever the, perhaps is, collecting that data to me is a little bit questionable, right? It could be voluntary, whatever, I get that piece, and I get it from Massachusetts law, I understand that part, it could be an infringement of somebody's privacy. However, if we're just looking at it from an educational standpoint, and passing information on, to me, that comes to be part of our role as we're looking at the social emotional well-being of, of the children. That's when I looked at, you know, granted, I only can answer it very quickly, but the Health and Safety Fair flyers that were in what Vicki handed out, to me, looking at things like that, there seems to be, to me, in my mind, there's a place for that and there's a place for us. Because we would be, if you didn't come in tonight, we may be considering something like that in the future, or three months ago we would have considered it, or two months from now, we would have, it's just a question of what dissipates it. Because to me, that's part of our role, we sat here and talked about resources for the longest time about families of kids who were struggling. If you remember back when we, when Jess did her, her budget presentation, we talked about outreach, we talked about this back in December of last year when we got the update, and we think we may have even done one prior to that around September or October. So this to me is just part of that continuum of passing on information to help families keep their children safe, and the safe is now becoming a bigger and bigger area that we have to protect. So we, it's not a topic we haven't spent time on, maybe not the firearm piece of it, but we've talked about, we talked about cameras during the budget season, we've talked about changing, and we have changed front egresses, we've talked about locks, so I, I see this as a natural tie-in to that. We're not saying, oh, we're banning this, or we're going to promote banning that, that's not what we're trying to do, all we're trying to do is provide educational resources to help families. That's where I look at it, David. Now, I, I get where you're coming from, and I respect that, we just have to find where that law is.
Right, exactly. I mean, I think maybe the first year we do it, if, if we talk about the gun safety piece in the home, maybe it's a voluntary piece, I'd be interested to see, I'm just saying, just an idea, how many people would fill it out? You know, is it 10%, is it 80%? I, I think it would be interesting to see.
Well, and I think Mike's touched on it, obviously this ties in, sort of the, the accidents with unsecured firearms, that's its own bucket to me, right? And, and that's a no-brainer, you secure it, those don't happen. The other situations where you're dealing with, with potential violence situations, as well as potential suicide situations, it could be any form, and that's just a form that it could take, right? So that's, goes to the discussion that we just talked about, is the greater health and wellness and the, the social emotional component that ties into what we're talking about, and really, that important factor will always be at the, at the forefront of what we talk about, and like you said, maybe this ties in nicely with that, that we can build on that from our community standpoint, because that is, and clearly, through the events that have happened this week, even more to the forefront of what we're trying to focus on, really, the well-being and that, again, whatever vehicle that could look like for someone, we want to make sure that we're there to support them and be proactive to make sure we don't get to that point, so.
Can I just read three sentences? I happen to be moving my papers to get ready for the next topic, and I happen to, I literally just, when I pull the papers, school committee goals, 2021, 2022, the school year which is ending tomorrow, three, three seconds. Full summary, support efforts within the Pembroke Public Schools to create a safe and healthy learning environment for all students and staff. Engage and educate parents and students on topics that are relevant to their students' social and emotional well-being, use data to perform, inform, use data to inform professional development needs and resources for the district. I think if you look at the data, clearly what happens, you know, just in the past month, locally and nationally, is the data. Educate is what we've talked about, and that's all, I think, what our role is, and if you go back to the goal, is to create a safe and healthy learning environment for all students and staff.
Well, it sounds to me like everybody sort of is on the same page that we should do some education on it, and, you know, it's an important subject, you know, certainly we can tweak it for Pembroke. I, I hear David's point about, you know, making people sign off, you know, like, maybe that's crossing the line, but maybe there's some sort of a compromise that you can come up with and, you know, go, when you're talking, during policy or whatever, I don't know.
Well, and my expectation too, seeing a couple of our officers here in the, in the room tonight, is that there would be a strong collaborative and partnership with the police department through this process, right? And really, they're the experts in this field, and, and we would look to partner and support with them through anything that we would do to help through this process, so. And again, we thank you for being with us today.
So I think the question that, that we would have, administration would have, is the next step, logical step for you all would be to kick it to Policy Sub to try to draft something for you all to take a look at and, you know, add, edit, adapt. I apologize if you thought the Newburyport was what I was proposing, because it is not. I also just sent you the Plymouth language as well, but if, you know, if we wanted to take a stab at this, you could probably start in Policy Sub.
Is there a motion to send this topic to Policy Sub to work on a resolution, or?
So.
We have a motion by Sue, second by David.
Uh, Mike.
I mean, sorry, Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nice habit. And thank you, guys. You're more than welcome to join us for the rest of our meeting, but do, do not feel obligated.
And thank you for the cookies.
Thank you for the cookie also.
Yeah.
Yes, appreciate it.
So ladies, Policy Sub is open to the public, so I'll just shoot you in when it gets ready.
It's not a right or wrong issue, it's certainly something that people feel that they can get backed up against because you want them to do this, you want them to do that, it's just having people listen, and make up their own minds and move forward. You know, I don't see this as a second dependent thing, it's just put it out there, let people think about it, be more people see that they say, it'll change their minds, they often do.
Thank you, ma'am.
If it's your child in your home with your gun, you might think twice about it if somebody resists your intervention.
Appreciate it, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that.
So Mike, I can see on your agenda that you have certain bills circled, so you didn't get them all yet, it should go to me.
Thank you, I was nervous that I didn't get an email.
Yep, no.
I know I'm late at signing it.
Yep. You should see it tonight or first thing in the morning.
That's fine, that's fine, I know I'm usually the last one to sign, and I'm like.
It's not coming, you have lead, I just, I don't think.
That note, which is, if it comes tomorrow, that's fine too.
Okay. Perfect.
I got nervous.
I saw you circled it, now I'm like, uh-oh.
Well, I also didn't get an email today on something else that was personally important, and I was like, I wasn't sure if I had an email. Thank you.
With that, we will look at reorganization of our subcommittees.
So in your packet, you have what they currently are.
Thoughts on need for adjustment? First, let's look at our appointed agents, do you, is everyone in those roles, and Suzie's not here to talk about social justice, but are you still willing to serve as that appointed agent?
Yes.
Perfect, so we will maintain those three.
We don't need negotiations this year, correct?
I'm not foreseeing a pandemic that we need to bargain, so, you never know, so it's good to keep that, you just, you know, know who's on it.
I would say maintain that because the history and the understanding there would be important.
Yeah, same.
We have the certification piece too, that you have to have, I'm drawing a blank on what it's called.
Yeah, so the IBV training.
IBV, thank you.
And that, right before we go for our next round, you can get those that aren't trained in training.
And government study committee capital plan is not active either.
It should be, but it's not.
No, I don't believe I've had any invitations for that.
They haven't had that in a couple of years, unless they've changed.
I have no problem waiting until that happens.
Which is fine, I mean, you can leave those to the same, you're just trying to figure out what's active and.
What, what exactly does the government study?
So it had a couple of different names, was, it was fiscal management at one point, was it?
No, that was different, so there was cash management, which was completely different. Cash managing, management was more towards the budget and free cash and that type of thing. This was a few years ago, Dan Tribuco and, probably even more than that, Dan Tribuco and John Brown were appointed by the Select Board at the time to come up with the capital plan, they were looking at a Milton Plan to do some borrowing to buy capital, and it would almost be a perpetual note to keep borrowing from, or take a certain amount of, certain revenues and put into capital. Anyway, it was very active at the time, and they were working with the, with the individual committees on what the town should do and what each department needed to come up with a true capital plan. It was, it was a really good effort, and Dan did a really nice job on it, it just kind of died on the mine when they couldn't get the money.
So we did something similar in Carver, I served on that sort of capital plan, and they had a master plan for the community, not just the school system, so I was representative for the school system on that committee, and it was a great, so I'm hoping this is something similar to that?
It wa, it, well, not really, because it wasn't, it didn't tie to the master plan, they did have a master plan at one point, but this was just purely capital, capital items, and they were trying to do two things, you know, one was take a certain percentage of certain revenues in earmarket for, for capital projects. The second was, I believe there was a borrowing component, I'm almost positive there was, and again, would correct me if I'm wrong, also take that, and that would be, that would be your capital funding for each year, those two revenue streams or whatever. It went pretty far, but then we turned out to not have the money, or the town hit one of its multiple money issues, so it has not been revitalized since. This has got, this needs, this has to go back, definitely pre-pandemic and probably two years prior to that.
So is it something I should probably be proactive and reach out to the Board of Selectmen? I mean, the Select Board?
You can reach out to Dan to see what he's looking to do as far as capital planning, wouldn't hurt.
Okay. So we can keep that the same. Thoughts on the others? I'm currently on policy and education, but I have no problem sharing the love.
So historically, the chair has been on fiscal.
Fiscal?
I'm not suggesting you take on a third, maybe you want to swap one of the others.
Yeah. Was there any of those, I can sw, I mean, I'm in the alternate there, so.
I'll swap out, I can do education.
Oh, you're in for a great summer, Mike.
I will literally do any one of these that you need me on.
I'd say the same, wherever you need me, I'm happy.
Wherever you need me.
And Suzie's usually pretty cool.
I actually really enjoyed learning about, you know, the fiscal strategy, like, it was very interesting to me, and I was, you know, it was actually really good for me to learn the first year, so I'd like to stay on it, but I don't, if you need me somewhere else, I'll go somewhere else.
Sounds like if we just flipped Lance and Mike.
For the alternate on the fiscal strategy.
Yeah, and you, Mike the lead on education, and you the lead on fiscal strategy.
That sounds perfect.
I typed up and bring it back to the meeting, I was hoping to get some Policy Sub scheduled just because we want to get the handbooks to you in July, so that when people are filling out the registration paperwork, and we ask them to sign off that they've seen the handbook, they actually have seen the accurate handbook. We've been in August the past couple of years, so, and then this piece obviously that we talked about, as well as the graduation awards, got kicked to Policy Sub as well, so. Busy policy.
So are we good with keeping the rest as is?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Do we have to do it as a motion, or we just keep it as a?
You don't have to do it as a motion.
All right, I'm good with it.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, guys.
Hopefully Natalie got that huge change there. I wrote it down, Natalie, put a star next to it, we're good.
With that, we'll go into the superintendent's report.
So there is two things in my report. The first is the part of the school committee goal through the past couple of years has surrounded around focus groups and bringing in parent and community input. Obviously, COVID was a little bit of a hindrance to that type of approach, though I do feel as though we did communicate quite effectively and very often with the community, and give them lots of opportunities to share their feedback with us during the times that we were meeting remotely. I do want to start to think about those focus groups, what the areas are that we want to look at, and getting them scheduled so that we can get them on the calendar. I do think the summer is hard, I'm not proposing that, we ask folks to commit to a time over the summer, but that we have the full schedule ready to go for the, for the return of school, and people know what the topics are so that they can express interest. The other piece in thinking about it is obviously offering multiple opportunities on the topic, not everybody can attend an evening meeting, or an afternoon meeting, or a morning meeting, so being mindful of that. And the last piece that I ask that we think about is just having folks pre-register, obviously so we have an idea of who's interested, it is helpful, I can speak for myself, and I know that Jess and Mary Beth are very similar, whenever somebody calls us, the first thing we do is look up their kid, right? We want, what, what do we know about them if the name doesn't ring a bell? So it's helpful for us just to, to know a little bit about the folks that are, are looking to participate, so that we can obviously expect them when they arrive and know who they are, but also just know a little bit about their kids and potentially their experience here, so. I gave you just what the goal areas were and what I was thinking about topics, and the timeframe, I do think quarterly probably makes the, the most sense, so, you know, four, four sets over the course of the year, happy to add topics, take away, just starting to brainstorm, so there was some place to start from. I know that Sue had mentioned earlier, under social and emotional health and wellness, potentially looking at some of the bullying. Resources that we have for families, obviously, focus groups would allow us to hear experiences and really grow our, our resources for folks based off of what folks are truly experiencing in our schools. I think that's a great one to add, that is a topic. Obviously not tied to the order of these, either we can move them around if you think that's something you want to tackle first thing the school comes back in, happy to move them around as, as you guys decide.
So I guess that was sort of my question, is, would we just focus on achievement then for the fall, or the early fall, or are these focus groups meeting year-round?
So I would suggest that you just do one at a time.
Okay. So intense focus group, get feedback, bring us feedback, move on to next topic, sort of concept?
Right, right.
Okay.
So the time, the reason why I selected those timings is just generally, we get our achievement data in the fall, so we'd have, you know, this year's MCAS, SAT, ACT type information at that time, but given how our week has shifted a little bit, this week it might help to start with, with social and emotional health and wellness. The idea is to get technology in before the budget, because that seems to be, you know, one of those things we want to know kind of what people are thinking, and where we want to go as we're starting to have budget conversations, but.
Well, and is this course offerings that closer to the next following school year?
Yeah, so course offerings.
Where it really could impact the next. Where it really could impact the next.
Course offerings you probably want to have before you do your program of studies, like, so we can sync up the time. But I do think trying to keep the focus to your goal areas so that we're collecting useful data is helpful.
Agreed. Thoughts from the committee, Sue?
Um, what about, you know, like a special education focus group, or?
So we already do a lot of that. Um, so we do have the CPAC, those are, those presentations are open to all families, not just families of special ed students. They have a series of presentations over, um, the course of the school year. I don't, I don't know that there's a, a focus group specific topic around special education that it would, would hold. But special education would be a part of every one of these conversations that we have.
That's true, yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, and that all ties into, Mike brought up earlier about our goals, right? And how these tie directly to that, so this is giving us direct feedback, focusing on those goals to really help us see how we're progressing in that focus area.
So a couple of things. All these are going to have a budget impact, so you, you need to figure out a way to get all of them in before you get past, probably before February, or by the end of February, because they're all going to have some type of budget impact. I do agree, social emotional has to come first, because you're going to get kids coming back in and re-engaging, and lots of things can happen over the summer, which we all know. I think achievement early, I mean, could go second, is what I had. You have to give, in the one that, well, let me back up. I think it can't be first, I think it ha, you have to have some runway between the start of the school year and when this is offered, for two of the items that stuck out to me. One was, um, around elementary accelerated and PCMS course select structure, because you're only going to have eighth grade parents who will have experience with it. Seventh grade parents are going to be new to it, and if you have it in September, October, you're not going to get any real good feedback from what they're experiencing versus elementary school, what their expectation was. So I would go social emotional first, achievement second. I would go communication third, and technology fourth. And I understand the budget implications around technology. I, to where I look at it, it might not impact the amount we spend, it'll impact where we spend it. Um, because people need to get through a year of having the technology in front of them. Some of the families, I'm guessing, will be going to Chromebooks for the first time, coming off of potentially iPads or other units. Going into middle school to high school, the emphasis on technology is greater. So you need some experience if we're going to go back to what's working and what's not. Otherwise, the comment's going to be the Wi-Fi sucks. You know, and I say that facetiously, but that's going to be the, right, and.
I'm connected to the Wi-Fi right now.
But that, but that's, you know, I'm, I'm saying it right tongue-in-cheek, but that's, we, we want to get, what we want to get out of it is what parts of the technology are working, meaning the software packages, right? Potentially accessing out of school, um, those types of things. So I think the more runway you give on that, the more credible the feedback's going to be. Not that it's not going to be credible, but it's going to be more useful and actionable. So I understand wanting to push this as far as April. I don't think you can. I think you almost have to do.
Well, could we potentially overlap a couple?
Yeah, that's fine.
You don't even have to do more than two months.
To fit in the timeline.
You could go back to back, right? You could go, I'm just going to throw this out, you could do end of September, social and emotional, you could do achievement. MCAS scores, I know that you get the gross numbers, Mary Beth, right, but then.
They don't release them to the families until the beginning of October.
So, right, so you're.
We have the data in school, yeah.
Yeah, you're probably looking at, could you look at end of October there, and then come back in November with communication, and then technology in February.
Then we can take the spring off.
I'm just, well, the thing is, you, you're not taking the spring off, because you're taking that data, and you're putting it into the budget.
I understand.
That's, I'm just trying to, just to thought.
David, thoughts on, uh?
No, I, I think Mike, uh, makes a, a real good point. I think we get most of it done by the first of the year, you know, if everything cooperates and goes the right way. Um, I think social emotional has to be one, achievement two, you know, communication, technology, the technology has a budget impact. Again, I can see the same layout, so I think that, that's pretty good.
Well, and we want some time to, like any collection of data, you need time to process and sift and filter, and see how that then translates to action.
Action is like, like action.
Yep.
Um, so what do you need from us?
Uh, I'm, okay, I'm going to, anything, we can start regulating this. Nope, um, as it gets closer in the order that you all discussed.
Awesome, thank you.
The last thing, second thing and last thing in my packet is, um, my evaluation and timeline. So in your packets, I gave you a thirty, no, I'm just, eighty-two page superintendent rubric, twenty-four, uh-huh, page superintendent rubric that Massachusetts has as a sample on the DESA website. I also gave you, um, kind of how we handle it in the past. Like, I, I know this is my thirteenth year here now, but you have far more. I'm not sure you all have ever used a rubric in its own, because it's.
No, we haven't, I just.
It doesn't really relate to the actual job and the way that it's written.
It doesn't. All I go back to, I actually can't hear Paul Bois, we're talking right now. So the way, yeah, because he was very passionate about the rubrics. It, it, what we did, um, as you can see by the comments, which are obviously.
Right, I gave you a copy the last time that we.
Which is a while ago, obviously. We selected what was important to us. I believe we tied, I think not believe, I know we tied it back to the goals. So what I would recommend is taking the goals, which thankfully were in the packet, thank you, and tying it to the standards we want. What we did is, you can see, we tied two standards to each of the four areas, which happened to be ironically the same ones that we happen to have here for our goals. Um, so take two of the, of the components, and then say, okay, we believe that this is the, this ties to communication, this ties to whatever. That's kind of the way we, we did it in the past. It worked. I know every district, not every district, a lot of districts around the Commonwealth are struggling with this concept, uh, because the rubric is so complex.
Oh, my gosh.
Everybody's doing it differently. But, I mean, my recommendation, so we have something that's meaningful and actionable, is to take our goals, which are still current unless we want to change them, and tie them to two standards for each goal.
Thoughts on Mike's suggestion? Sue?
Um, I defer to Mike, because this is my first year doing this, so.
Well, eh, I will speak on behalf of one that went through the school department that decided to use the entire rubric. We were each assigned a section and went through it, and it was painful. So I am wholeheartedly in support of making it more meaningful, and making it more, something that's tied directly to what our focus is, that will also make it manageable for the committee and for Aaron. So I'm, I'm in support of that as well.
I would say let's make it relevant, and there we go.
Yeah. So do we need, are we comfortable with the ones that, the objectives we chose before? Do we need to relook at and see if those are applicable to our current goals?
Your goals have shifted a little. I don't, I wouldn't necessarily say.
So has the rubric.
Yeah, I wouldn't necessarily say.
So we should revisit that component.
So maybe when we meet in July, you could, you guys could share where you think things fall, and we could get the, kind of framework for the sheet.
Okay. That works. So there are action items between now and then?
Yeah, you all independently are going to work on.
We'll work on that, perfect.
I'll tell Susie the homework, it'll work.
All right. Sounds good. So if you would take the rubric and our goals, and if you would identify on your end, and then we'll bring that together and see, and get us on the same page, so we all can identify. Agreement on two in each goal, Aaron?
Yes, Sue?
Okay, yep.
Yeah, okay. Well, no, that's not a question, that was a, okay.
Directive.
That was a directive.
I'm writing down my notes.
If you are in support, perfect. All right, so thank you. And I just covered up my minutes.
The last thing is your future meeting dates and topics. So we had talked about July nineteenth as being, um, our FY twenty-two close, which is.
Yes.
Great, um, obviously want to bring you some policy stuff at that meeting as well, with handbooks, potentially something on this, um, safe storage resolution. I absolutely don't anticipate being fully evaluated on that day, so it'll just be deciding on the category, which is totally fine. And I can share our final draft of the, um, focus group topics, just one more time of what we're trying to push it out, if that makes sense.
Everyone available on the nineteenth?
Looks good.
Okay, then we will mark that in our calendars?
Sure, we did not pick August dates when we were together the last time.
Correct. I know August is a time for travel. Does everybody have an idea of what days they might be available, or do we need to wait till the July meeting to set the August meeting?
I know that I am away the fourteenth to the twenty-first. So definitely not that week.
And I am actually the week before.
I have no idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just go where you're told, Mike.
Yeah, well, I, we're only have work traveling.
So in August, we would have the second, the ninth, sixteenth, or the twenty-third?
Yeah, so the sixteenth is out for me, for sure.
And the ninth is out for you.
And the ninth is out for me.
So either the second or the twenty-third. I would rally for the twenty-third, just because the second is really close to the nineteenth.
Yeah, we're agreeing.
The twenty-third, you could have the principals talk to you a little bit about opening of schools.
Yeah, yeah. And what you can do is you can do, what's it, what's the calendar, like the twenty-third and when's the opening of August?
School starts Monday, the twenty-ninth.
Yeah. I still figure, it shows you, I don't know how to look at the calendar. Somebody teach me. How do I get the month? Oh, here we go, duh.
Click on the month.
So if you're looking at the twenty-third, you can always do the twenty-third, and you could do the thirtieth if you needed. You're not going to need twenty-fourth.
Fourteenth, yeah.
Yeah, you're not, you're not, well, we can always, but it just gives you an opportunity, right?
So the kids go back to thirty-first?
Yep, Wednesday and Thursday, the thirty-first and the first.
Perfect, so I guess it's a time of four schools.
So we'll get a meeting before school?
Yeah, so why don't we mark the August twenty-third as our August meeting date?
I'll let Susie know.
We have the thirtieth if we need it.
Perfect. With that, do we have a motion to move to executive session pursuant to Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three to discuss a personal service contract as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on legal position of the school committee as declared by the chair?
So move.
We have a motion by Sue, second by David. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, roll call. David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And myself is a yes.
No questions in the mailbox, are you good?
Perfect. Thank you, everyone.
Do we just stay here, or are we going to pass the hall?